Is items from council? Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up? Okay, yes ma'am.
Um, I've asked a question about the, about Leary Lane and sidewalks. I've been asked by several people to look at that. There are schoolchildren that are walking out in the street. And I know it's a very expensive proposition, but I've asked about it. And I've asked for some numbers, and I think Mr. Dusek has some information, so.
Okay.
And I, I think this is good because I'd like the community to hear it as well, but it's something that we need to look at.
Sure. Councilors, you're probably aware, there's a section of Leary Lane that does not, does not have sidewalks at this time, and it's basically the section from John Stockbar down to Dean Cook. Everything past Dean Cook to Sam Houston has a four or five-foot sidewalk. I'm not sure exactly which one it is, but is, does exist right now. In order to put sidewalk in that section that doesn't have it, the base price would be about $625,000. And that's just a, a four-foot sidewalk, open ditch, and that's it. Part of that issue is, is a right-of-way. We'd have to buy some right-of-way because the right-of-way is real narrow there.
Say that number again.
Six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's roughly two hundred, twenty-eight hundred linear feet of sidewalk.
How much is the property?
Uh, that's a, I really couldn't tell you. That's just kind of a guess on what we, what we've had to do in the past.
Never mind. Wrong question, I guess. How much is the sidewalk, assuming we own the property? Never mind.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, we've had people come and talk to us before, and I started thinking about it. You know, it's not a school district problem. It's a city street. It's our problem. And when we've got people, elementary school aged kids walking in the street, it's just something I think we should look at as we, as we look at our capital improvement plan going forward. I'm not proposing that we break ground tomorrow, but it's something that we should probably be looking at a little more seriously.
When we bring the CIP back, you had asked me, and I said it wasn't on the five-year CIP. When we come back, it can be one of the alternative projects, and if the majority of council wishes to move another project off to substitute that, that'll be a great time to do it.
Sure, we can, we can put it in there as alternative product, project.
Thank you. That's what I just wanted to start some discussion.
Thank you. It's come up before here, so. Okay, we're still in items from council? Anything? Seeing nothing, we'll, we'll close items from council, move into citizens' communication. If anyone would like to address the council, now would be the time. Please limit your comments to five minutes or less. Out of courtesy to everyone else. So whoever'd like to come forward, come on forward.
Hello, my name is Mary Elba Sierra. I live on seventy-eight sixty-six, State Highway one eighty-five South. I'm here because of issues. I'm hoping to get, I don't know how, we, we used to have police reports, and it's very important because I was in an accident. We had our church van, and we had some kids in there, and the guy was crossing over and hit us. He, he was crossing four lanes to turn fifty-nine South. And I, the ambulance were there. I have a police report. Of course, it's very, it was not useful in any way for what they did. We had an ambulance there, and according to this paper I got, the general order, it says that if there is an ambulance, and also if there is a criminal offense, when we got there during the accident, we asked the, we were trying to talk to the guy, and he kept saying, "No police, no police." The other guy was in the car and wouldn't come out either. Well, when, after my son couldn't speak, I went and spoke to him, and it smelled like alcohol. We had the ambulance there, the officer showed up, she just did a quick look and left the scene. I had no time to talk to her because, like I said, there were three children in the van, and I had to see if they were, they were crying because they just lost their dad a year ago through a car accident. So the officer, just a quick in and out. Like I said, there is a police report, but it's very incomplete, very, just that, you know, there was assistance. The ambulance were there, and like I said, and I was busy talking to them. We went through all the procedure. I was not given a blue form. I finally found out I needed one through the City of Victoria when they gave me, when Ms. Garrett. I, I've done this for four months, back and forth, back and forth. And these four months, I've gone and I talked to, the, his insurer was the Texas Farm Bureau, and they, after four months of going through this, they say, "Our investigation has revealed that our insurance is not legally responsible for the accident. Therefore, we are respectful of declining your claim." I mean, I'm speechless. The guy went over four lanes. I was in the right-of-way heading home to take these girls till their parents picked them up, and this is what I get? So my insurance, I've been with them for almost fifteen years, out of courtesy, they did their investigation, and they said, "Based on the available facts, we have determined that our insurance is not liable for your damage." So I'm like... And, and when I called, the guy that's in Texas Farm Bureau, he stated that because there was no police report, he couldn't. It was his word against mine. I'm speechless. I'm, I'm a voter and a taxpayer, and I cannot believe that this is the way they, they're gonna work with me now. I got a van repair of a little over $2,000, and my son does a Big Brother program. He's a correction officer in La Jolla County, and we do this out of the goodness of our heart, and then we get this kind of response from the insurance because there was no police report. So I'm here to ask, is there, as a taxpayer and voter, is there any change, anything that we can do to get that? Like I said, there was the police report, but it's very incomplete because she said, "Well, the vehicle's runable," so the report is just as an act, you know, that it did occur in the old reason. They showed up because the ambulance were there. And now, I've been, this is a binder, four months. I feel like an attorney, my own investigation, but I, I didn't get nowhere's. I know they get somewhere's, but at least I gave it an effort. And I've gone through all this paperwork, and so I'm, I'm asking that, we really are in need of, the police report really makes a difference, especially when you're dealing with the insurance companies and... Because that's, that was his final letter, and that's the end of how, I mean, it's up to us to find a way to fix the van. And, you know, this is, I, I just, it, like I said, it made a big difference when we have a police report. So that's what I'm presenting, and hopefully you take it into consideration, that, you know, it makes a big difference. And thank you.
Ms. Sierra, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to get too much of the details because I don't know the details of the situation, but because of an insurance agent says on the phone that the police report was not accurate does not mean that insurance agent is correct. Let me just clarify that very clearly. Sounds like you need to find a private attorney to help you with that. So I, I think that would be my only advice. I don't know about anyone else here.
Well, that gets very costly.
I understand, I understand. I, I'm sorry for your troubles, and I know that's frustrating.
I've got beautiful green garden, green garden back there, but I don't have a money tree back there.
I understand.
He was a hundred percent at fault, so it doesn't make sense that, and when I talked to Cody, that's what he said, "Because you don't have a police report, we're just gonna throw it out as you, your word against his."
Understood.
And there's no, like I said, he crossed four lanes. I'm going straight to my home. Four lanes, and he took, took us to the other side. And yet, I was on the right-of-way, so where do we go from there? Again, like you said, an attorney, but that's, if he's at fault, the insurance would just, it would have been a lot easier with a police report, instead of going through all this paperwork and procedure. I want, I want, I want to do my time. I like when I vote, I like to know who I'm voting for, and I like to look into each individual and their criteria. This is, you know, this takes time that I don't have to be doing. If, if there was a police report, it'd be so easy. But again, I thank you for your time. God bless you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Citizens' communication is still open. If anyone would like to speak about any topic at all, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we'll close citizens' communication, and we have three items on the consent agenda.
The first is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of March twentieth, 2018. The second is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Zambelli Fireworks in the amount of $30,000 to provide the Fourth of July fireworks show and declaring an effective date. And the third is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a HydroStop side tapping unit from HydroStop LLC in the amount of $34,458, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, those passed. Now we'll move on to our E1.
Item E1 is a resolution appointing new members to the Victoria County Public Health Department, Board of Health, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's see, did we, we filled in those blanks last time?
We just had one name.
Oh, okay, forgive me. I'm a little behind on that one. Okay. Okay, no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. Number two.
Number two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Fifth Amendment to the Fleet Management and Maintenance Agreement with First Vehicle Services Incorporated to allow modified fees for fleet management and maintenance services for an overall target cost of $1,278,862, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E2.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yes. On Exhibit A, it says that we amended this, the Fourth Amendment was done on July, January the fifth, 2018. Why are we amending it again?
What we did in January, if council will recall, in our budget for this year, our one communications person retired in October. So as part of our current budget, we put money in for First Vehicle to now take over the upfitting of cars. That employee was hired and started that amount of money to this budget in January, not in October, because Gerald Ressman, who was in there, actually retired in January, January one. So it was, that was to cover the cost that's no longer paid to a actual city employee going forward.
It just seemed like, oh, oh, we just did some amending to this.
We, we, we planned for this ahead of time. We, we knew he was gonna retire a year ahead of time.
Okay. That was my only question.
Thank you, Darrell. Any other questions for Darrell while he's there? I know he can answer anything we ask him.
I'll try.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it.
E3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company Incorporated to act as the City of Victoria's consultant for permitting the expansion of the city's landfill for a total cost of $1,051,500 over the course of three-year process, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E3.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Discussion? Do you have some folks here?
Yes, sir, I do. Seth Cunningham is here to represent Burns and McDonald, and we've spent some time, Seth put together this PowerPoint we're gonna go through, which kind of talks about the process a little bit, some things that, you know, we've identified. There's, you know, some different governmental entities that we'll have to work through over this three-year process. And he's kind of, I'm gonna let him come up and kind of walk through what this process looks like so that council and the public has an understanding. This is not a permit you just go down and get. This is a permit that's a multi-year process, and we've, we've discussed this with council on multiple occasions as we worked to this point. But I think it's important for the public to understand kind of how this process works. It's, it's kind of a tedious thing, and so with that, Seth Cunningham up.
Good evening. Darrell mentioned Seth Cunningham. I've presented to you all a number of times in the past, dating back to probably about 2006 related to solid waste issues, and I would be managing this project for the City of Victoria. And I've got with me Mark Knoc with Burns and McDonald, who is head of our environmental group for all of Texas. And so I'll be going through the presentation, and both Mark and I will be available for any questions you have. Feel free to ask anything specific to slides, but then at the end, you know, any general questions, I'd be happy to, to address. Just a quick overview of what we'll address tonight, just a quick slide just about Burns and Mac, since I know there's varying levels of familiarity with our firm. Talk a little bit about the current landfill, what the purpose of this proposed project is, an overview of the project and how we've broken it into phases. And as Darrell mentioned, it's a multi-year process, but we've included a typical timeline for this, this type of project. Burns and Mac is a six-thousand-person, hundred-percent-employee-owned firm. We founded in 1898. We've been around for a few years. In 2017, we were ranked the number-one engineering design firm in Texas, Louisiana by Engineering News Record, and, and safety is really a key component to Burns and McDonald, and we're able to, to still maintain, it's a very important part of all our projects, and we're able to maintain, you know, an average, level of average on the incident rate related to safety incidents. So, you know, this project involves fieldwork, and so, you know, that we, safety is a critical part of our, our firm. So we've talked about a similar slide in the past with you all, but it feels good just to kind of give this basic understanding of the current landfill in the area out there. The green rectangle represents the current permitted landfill, and really, your landfill disposal capacity runs up pretty close to the boundary. There's not a lot of buffer zones, so pretty much that, that green area represents both the land, the previous, the permitted boundary, and the land owned by the, the city there. And then the larger, kind of, let's say, purplish color rectangle, just below that is land that the city's purchased over two different times, one more recently and one dating back, I believe, over ten years ago that was purchased. And currently, part of that land is being used for soil bar area for the current landfill operations, and part of it's being used for the city's compost operation. A couple of things I wanted to point out also in this is, it's, if you can make it out, there's a red line that kind of bisects between the existing landfill and the, the land that's owned but not part of the landfill, and that's the power lines that run out there. And we've talked about in the past, at some point, to be able to, to make the most of any future landfill capacity, those power lines need to be relocated. That's not part of this project, but just reminding everybody that that's out there. And the city's talked with, I believe, AUP in, in the past, and gotten cost estimates from them for doing that kind of work. So it's a known thing that would have to be done out there. And then the other part of it is the dashed yellow line, and that's really a drainage ditch that cuts through some of the, the farm fields out there, and we'll spend some more time talking about that because that impacts the project as well. So in terms of the current life for the landfill, landfill life is really dependent on a number of factors, things like, you know, waste growth of the landfill, what kind of diversion activities that the city's participating in, whether the city itself or other private businesses, storm events. You all obviously have been, were impacted by Hurricane Harvey, and the landfill was really an important resource for helping to respond to that emergency, that emergency response. And then there's also, we saw airspace utilization, how well the waste is compacted in the airspace that you have. But the, the table to the right shows kind of a few different scenarios, but more or less, we're looking at about twenty years of landfill capacity, but any of these other factors could influence that. And while twenty years seems like a long period of time, I think it's an adequate timeframe for the city to work with, not feel rushed, but again, this is a multi-year process. And, and one of the reasons why you don't want to, you know, cut things too close in having landfill capacity for the city is if you look on this slide, this shows the type one landfills, which is the blue dots, that the city has a type one landfill. And you can see the circle, so you can see right in the middle of that circle is the City of Victoria landfill, and there's really not many landfills within eighty or a hundred miles, depending if you're looking at straight distance versus driving distance. And so there's really no other landfills in the region that could take the city's waste directly. You'd have to be looking at perhaps building a transfer station and transferring that waste along distances if you didn't have your own landfill capacity here. So that's a really critical thing for the city. And, and in twenty years as well, is, you know, why the city, part of the reasons the city is looking at this now versus, you know, waiting to, to later in that time period is just in general, environmental regulations tend to get stricter over time, not less strict. And so getting the permit in place and having that available to the city for future, for future uses, you know, an important consideration. And so, you know, really, the overall purpose of this project is to amend the landfill permit, and able to do that, there's a few steps that would have to be looked at prior to that. But again, looking at those, those various factors about landfill life, and there's a new, new one in that voted list about configuration of the expansion, and that would be part of the process to figuring out exactly what that would be, but we think somewhere in the order of, you know, ninety to a hundred years of, of landfill capacity from, from the current twenty. And so, as Darrell mentioned, there's a couple of entities that we would need to coordinate with. Because that drainage, since you're so close to the, the coast, and most things flow towards the, the coast there, including anything in that drainage ditch, it's important for us to work with the Corps of Engineers to understand, you know, is this just a drainage ditch, or is there any jurisdiction they would have over that drainage ditch? And you can't just call them up and ask them that question. You've got to do, kind of do your background work to, to show information about that and take that to the Corps, have a discussion, and potentially go through a process there, which we'll talk about a little bit. There's also looking at the floodplain, so coordinating with FEMA through Victoria County, looking at issues at the floodplain out in that area, and finally, looking at an amendment to the TCQ permit. So really, you know, three major entities that are involved in this process. I won't talk about each of these phases because we'll walk through each one of them, but really divide the project into, into six phases so we can look at it, you know, both from a budget and a schedule perspective, breaking it into overall, break it into phases. The first phase is really just the project initiation. We'll meet here with the city, with the relevant staff, kind of go through some initial assumptions that we want to address for the, for the study, have an informal meeting with the TCQ, and that just gives us an opportunity to lay out what the project would look like, have them provide us any feedback, anything they want to make sure that we address or take into consideration. And then also, one of the things we'd want to do is, right now, the land is owned by the city, but it's really not associated with the landfill. And so by just incorporating the land into the permit, it won't be disposal capacity, but it'll be just property of the landfill. That's just the next step that, so when you're dealing with these other agencies, other entities, they know, hey, this is land that's intended to be used as landfill, it's, you know, and so that's just a relatively easy process to go through for the TCQ. The next step really, in the phase two, gets into a lot of the background analysis, investigation analysis that needs to occur. We'll start off doing, we consider desktop analysis, looking at the databases of information related to waters of the US and threatened endangered species, cultural resources, you know, a lot of various elements, and then come out on site and do a lot of the, the site work. We know that, that area's been farmland for a long time, so there shouldn't be any surprises there, but it's just part of the process that you have to go through for any landfill. We'll develop a report for that, but then we'll also look at, you know, it, you know, the city really has option whether or not to relocate that drainage ditch. By doing, by relocating it, it just creates more usable capacity for the landfill, and that's why it would be worth looking into. So we'd develop a preliminary ditch design. It wouldn't be any shorter or longer than the current ditch. It would just be rerouted a little bit to just create some additional available space there. And then from that, look at, we call hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic studies, and that looks at, you know, that area out there hasn't really been studied in detail because it's, you know, farmland, relatively rural in that immediate area. And so this will look at what is really the base plant, floodplain elevation on that area, and how would the landfill impact that? So it's important to study both of those scenarios. And then the hydrogeologic investigation, as we'll go out there and actually drill borings in the, in the landfill expansion area to study the geology of the site, and all that will be important for TCQ in the permit process. So we'll take all this information and come back and meet with city staff, and say, we've gathered all this information, you know, all our assumptions that we started off with in, in phase one, are these still good assumptions? Does it look like we want to continue on this path? That's a good point to say, is there a reason to redirect and follow a slightly different path, but we'll, we'll have a lot of information at that point to be able to move forward. Phase three is when we take a lot of that information and actually sit down and be able to meet with the Corps and say, you know, we think this is not jurisdiction of the Corps for these various reasons. And the next steps really depend on what kind of feedback we get from them. They say, yeah, we don't think it's jurisdictional. We still may want to do the jurisdictional determination to have a formal response from the Corps of Engineers. If they think there's a chance that they would have jurisdiction, then we may also do the jurisdictional determination, but also look at the phase four permitting, which we'll talk about in a minute. This is also where we'll look at working with the county to do the floodplain permit as well as the, it's called a request for conditional letter of map revision related to floodplain. So phase four may or may not need to happen, depending on that conversation with the Corps of Engineers. If they say that this drainage ditch is jurisdiction of the Corps, we want to move it, we may need to get a permit to do that, and it'd be one of two permits. We won't know yet until we gather a lot of the information on what type of permit. There's also some other agency coordination that we would, we would do there. And after all that, we get to the, you know, the main point of this whole process, which is the, the MSW permitting for TCQ. And we divided it into two parts of the project, the master planning versus the application, but it's really all part of the landfill permitting process. The master plan, we'll sit down and, and look at various design decisions that we need to make for the landfill, how high up it would go, how it ties in to the existing landfill, where you do stormwater, how you do leachate collection. There's just a lot of things you work through. And then we'll take all that and then start to develop the application for TCQ. And we've included phase six in here, but it's not part of this current scope and budget. And this is, if you get to the point of moving the ditch, this is something that would need to occur within five years of getting approval from the Corps, or if the Corps says that they don't have any jurisdiction, then you've got even more flexibility. But regardless, it's something that would happen potentially after this project, and so it's not part of, of this particular project. In terms of, of timeline, like Darrell mentioned, you know, it's approximately a two-and-a-half to three-year project, typical timeline, you know, assuming it don't hit any unknown factors that we just can't predict at this time. And, and if the Corps of Engineers requires an individual permit, we do our best to try to do a lot of that in parallel with the other activities, but it could have an impact on the schedule. And, and this schedule really accounts for getting everything ready and submitting to TCQ and responding to routine comments. Sometimes the, the back and forth with TCQ can, can stretch out, and so we don't have any way to predict that at this stage. As Darrell mentioned, we've, working with Darrell and Mr. Raina, looked at the budget dollars by fiscal year, by phase, and so that, that dollar amount, the, the 1.05 million is how it's broken up down at the bottom of the, of the timeline, and that would be, so it would be spread over, you know, a couple of years, that, those dollars. So in summary, you know, you've got approximately twenty years of landfill life. There's, there's no current landfills within eighty to a hundred miles of the city. You have significant capacity added to the city's landfill, but kind of disposal security, you have it there in case you need it. And then it, it is a multi-year process that involves a number of agencies, the Corps of Engineers, FEMA, TCQ, and, and Victoria County. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have over the project, the process.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I noted we'll have to move the power line, but not necessarily immediately.
Correct.
But that would be in part of the permitting process?
So that's independent of the permitting that would have to occur as part of this project. We would just note as part of the process that those power lines would need to be moved prior to developing, actually constructing the landfill cells there. And so that would just need to happen before the city actually needs to be in that area to, to develop those cells.
And supposedly, the drainage ditch as well, for the same reason?
The drainage ditch is, is got a little bit more of a, we would need to get authorization for the TCQ to approve the permit. They would want to know that the other agencies have approved being able to relocate that, so it's a little bit different than the power line, because they, they would want to know if we're proposing to move that drainage ditch to take advantage of the landfill capacity, they'd want to know we have the, the proper authorizations in place to do that.
And why is Corps of Engineers involved?
That's, mentioning with the, that drainage ditch along with other things, just eventually flows into the Taco Bayou, which then flows into the Gulf. If you go back and look at surveys or aerial surveys dating back to like the fifties, it's there, and so there's, you know, was it man-made, or was it part of a natural channel at, at one point? We've got... We've got to go through and kind of study the ditch, and I know it says, study the ditch seems overkill, but to show them that we don't think that it's jurisdiction over the Corps of Engineers, looking at it, that's our opinion, but we have to get that from the Corps versus just moving forward without getting their input and approval.
Question, on the ditch, the yellow line, is that supposed to be where it's at right now?
That's where it's currently at right now.
Okay. If we were to move it, which way would you move it?
Let's see if I can effectively point this out. So, potentially, there's a couple of variations. So, right now, you say you can follow the dashed line from here to here. One scenario would be just to kind of flip it and go from here to here. And there's variations of that in between, depending on looking at those, developing the base floodplain elevation and doing those, I think, H and H studies, looking at the floodplain to see how that would potentially impact. Because what we don't know is, you know, is a floodplain really an issue there? Is anything we do going to impact that? And so, there could be a few variations of that, but that would be one of the things we'd look at, is just to essentially, potentially mirage it to the opposite corners.
That's an open ditch?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it shows up very well on our cover slide. Nope, it doesn't, got cut off. It's just a kind of trapezoidal shape, open ditch, slope sides, flat bottom.
If I remember correctly, it's very straight.
It looks like it was made.
Everything out there is in perfect angles.
The farmers did it, so why?
Farmer made it, yeah.
Why, why wouldn't, you know, it's our property, why wouldn't we just move the ditch before we ever start the permit? Why do we need to? I'm sorry to throw a wrench in you, I mean, if we need to cut a ditch in Riverside Park, we don't, I don't know if we call Army Corps of Engineers, or West Outfall, or any of those.
It's in the floodplain, so we'd...
Yeah, I mean, we, we have the current floodplain maps, okay? And we've, we've spent quite a bit of time with the floodplain administrator here, and John Johnston has helped us as well. Shows a little bit there, but that's not actual. What it is, is what they think happens. We've got to prove that it doesn't. Or that at least that ditch is man-made, even though it looks straight. If we don't go by the proper channels, they will stop us from getting that permit. Or they can, make it very difficult.
When we work in our own drainage ditches within the city, we have to work with the Corps on different things, so.
And, and I guess keep in mind too, that if we go to them with the determination, and they agree with us that it's not jurisdictional, then we don't have to do that step at all in Phase 4. We just move right on with the permitting into Phase 5.
And that'll be reflected in the price.
Yes, sir.
We ultimately pay...
Yes, sir. And I think I put it in the CM1, that this will only take place if, depending on that jurisdictional determination.
Okay.
One of the comments that you made was that there were different places where you might move the ditch to, but one of them might be straight across, but you never did say around the property boundary. And if the ditch is cutting off some of our use of the property, would one of the considerations be to take it all the way to the boundary?
So, to take full advantage of the property, you'd have to kind of take a couple of different angles with it. You have to out this way, then down, then back, versus being able to come straight down and back. That would also increase the length of the ditch. And so, you know, part of, part of the land over there then was intended to also just be some buffer from the surrounding area and provide future uses for either moving the compost operation over there to take advantage of the landfill space where the compost is currently located. And so, we would maximize the overall use of the spaces as best we could.
The master plan will help delineate all that too.
Yep. And we'll have some of those preliminary discussions in Phase 1, because it'll be important to have just some, some early discussions, but we'll get into a lot more detail through the master planning process in Phase 5.
Trash is expensive. I hope our citizens understand.
A heck of a lot more expensive to ship it 100 miles away.
This is a very important asset, as was clearly demonstrated in your presentation, Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Seth.
Yep.
Appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay.
Thank you.
E4 is a resolution awarding the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant De-watering Improvements Project to RP Constructors Incorporated. For their low bid of $1,424,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt E4.
Second.
We have a motion, second, you have questions? I know this was all in the budget.
Sir.
Some expensive equipment.
We got our money's worth out of that other equipment.
We did, yeah. One of them was from '71, I believe.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, pretty sure we were all born then. I don't know about Dr. Young there. I don't know how you... But that's, yeah, that's a lot of years out of that first one, and then your other one was '91, I think, the other press. Okay. Very good. No questions, counsel? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay.
E5 is a resolution awarding the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant SCADA System Upgrade Project to Control Panels USA Incorporated for their low bid of $494,000, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you, thank you, Donald.
We have an item E6 on the addendum, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an unimproved property contract for purchase of 2.69 acres of real estate from Victoria Shopping Center LTD and declaring an effective date.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, enthusiastic second, if I heard properly, this took, taken a while to get this little piece of property, so. We're all familiar with it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you, counsel.
I will make a statement, though. Once we close on this property, Ben Galvans will be ready to move to advertise for bids, so we will move quickly on this.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, you have a city manager report?
Chief Drake wants to kind of tell you about the Victoria Fire Department Fire Academy. I'm sure you've seen some articles and advertisement about it, but, go ahead.
Well, good evening, just wanted to brief you for a moment here on a project we're taking on in the community, and it's, it's a fire academy. So, we kind of give you a little, little backstory. About two or three years ago, the college decided to drop their fire academy program, and also the fire courses that lead to an associate degree in fire science. And we visited with them, we worked with the college quite a bit, talking about different solutions and alternatives, and looking to see if there was a partnership opportunity. And at the end of the day, we felt like we needed to really try to control the cost as much as we could, so that it maybe has some sustainability. So, we've been monitoring for the last couple of years since they dropped that program to see what our pool of candidates looks like when we go out to hire. And what we're seeing is a little bit over 80% of our applicant pool comes from out of the area. So, San Antonio, Houston, Corpus, Austin, that's where we're attracting candidates to our organization. And if you play that out over three to five years, most of those folks end up leaving and going back home. So, we felt like we needed to make an investment in time and effort into trying to create a training opportunity for local citizens that would like to be firefighters, by doing our own academy. The benefit we gained from that is that we don't have to pay an employee to just manage that process, and so, we can use our employees in a, in an off-duty capacity to come in and actually teach the program. So, we've been working on it for several months, and had to get approval through the Texas Fire Commission in order to get our program accepted as an acceptable, our facility as an acceptable site, and then our program to be approved by the Texas Commission on Fire Protection. We've done that. So, we're ready to move forward. We've, we've, we started advertising this, this week, and we're, we're going to leave this out for about a month, trying to advertise to our local surrounding areas as well, some of the departments that are in our, in our region, as an opportunity for them too, because they're struggling as well in trying to create that opportunity of firefighters that are homegrown, people that are from their communities and want to be in that area and going to be committed to their organization. So, I want to say that we're not dissatisfied with the employees we've hired. We've got some really great employees that aren't necessarily from Victoria, but we just see the long-term stability would be really good to create that opportunity for our local citizens as well. So, a couple of goals, we're just hoping that we've really fleshed out what we think the program's going to cost, and that our goal is just to cover our costs with, with our, with our employees. And then, we, we think with us managing the program, we give some significant credibility to the process, because the folks that are out there fighting fires on, on today will be teaching these guys tomorrow in this program. So, we've got some outstanding instructors that have already stepped up and want to be a part of this program. So, we're, we're kind of putting ourselves out there and trying something different. Years ago, that's how firefighters became firefighters, is there weren't, there weren't any schools that were being taught at the junior college levels. It was a fire department would hire Joe Citizen and say, okay, we're going to take you all the way through the training. And so, it's kind of come a full circle, it's coming back around to that. And we're willing to, we're willing to give it a shot and see if it works. In order for this to go, we need 10 students, so we're, we're really pushing this to cover all of our costs, because if you think about it, we're basically going to charge $25,000 to teach 10 people over 16 weeks and, and get them through their firefighter certification. So, we've got a really tight budget, and we're, we're crossing our fingers, and we're really hoping that there, there's a desire and a need out there. There's been a lot of word-to-word, mouth-to-mouth communications that's been going on for the last several months, of people that have been hearing that we're working on this type of program. So, we're real excited about it. We're, we're hoping that we're, we'll have some future firefighters that come through these programs that want to be in, in our organization.
So, you need 10 students?
10 students.
Okay, 16 weeks, and since folks are watching you, who do they call to sign up to be a fireman?
Yeah, so the...
You? Is it on there?
They can call me, but...
Okay. Well...
I'd be happy to take their call.
Okay. Do we call you?
Now, we have a, our website, the city website, is a, is a good landing place, as well as our, our department phone numbers. And something I didn't say is, this is an online web portal program, which means they, they do their academics through an online web portal, and then we meet every Saturday, the first hour or so is spent covering the previous week's academic piece, and then they have to be taught over the course of that 16 weeks, over 100 different fire skills. And so, the Saturdays are the hands-on, they get out there and they actually pull hose and do some firefighting, and all the rescue tools, and everything else that comes along with the, that being a firefighter. So, so they do the academics on their own. This should appeal to people that have a full-time job, because they just come in on Saturdays, so they can still maintain employment in an eight-to-five, if they have an eight-to-five job during the week. So, trying to create that avenue for people that can't just stop what they're doing and go to school for a semester or longer, because they have to be an MT to get in, or a paramedic to get into this program. So, so that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Exciting. Look forward to hearing good things about your graduates.
We hope, we hope we can get our, we can fill the seats and, and then get that first class going, that's our goal right now.
When do you, if you, well, when do you anticipate starting your first class?
The first class will be starting at the, the week of June the 4th.
Okay.
That's, that's our, that's our timeline.
All of this is being pointed out, it's all right in front of me, and I'm asking you these questions, so I apologize.
That's all right.
Thank you.
But you will take more than 10?
Yeah, we can take, we're probably going to cap the first one at about 12, 10 to 12. And then if it, if it, if it's very successful, if we get a really lot of candidates, we'll look at doing two, two, two a year, two different classes a year, a spring and kind of fall.
Call you Dean Tanner.
Dean. Now, I'm actually not doing this, this is, the, the guys out in the field are the ones that are going to be managing all this, so.
Thank you. Does this conclude our business?
Yes, it does.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, counsel.